Newport, June 13th, 2023, meeting of the Newport Planning Board. It is 6:18. And I'd like to get the roll calls starting with Jeff. Jeff North.
Toby Minat.
Ray Kibbe. Cam Ralph. Acting Chair. Okay. Agenda review, is there any comments for the agenda? Everybody?
President. Chairman. I was, I would like to add that there is a number of Mylar signings that need to happen tonight under administration.
Okay.
Just, I normally list them, and I do have what they are, but they're all here, and they're pre, besides the case tonight, all the other Mylars have been pre-approved by the boards, just waiting for signatures.
Okay, so we can do that at the end. Okay. We have no continued business, correct?
No.
Okay. And under new business, we have case 2023-LLA-01. Jeff North and Scott Stemp, owners, Clayton Flat Agent, requests a final review for lot line adjustments. Properties is identified map 220 lot 18 and 18-01 located on Greenwood Road in the rural zoning district. I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete, okay? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And one abstention. So we have three ayes and one abstention. Mark.
Thank you.
So we're now open. So now we'll open case 2023-LLA-01. Clayton, you want to present it?
Yeah, Clayton Flat, the surveyor. Jeff and Scott. Scott lives in the house up on Greenwood Road. One of the two houses on that side of the road. Pretty much the lot is, consists mostly below winds, you know, way around the house, and there's a field to the north and some woodland to the west. Basically, he wanted to buy 2.9 acres, sold from Mr. North. And he made this lot 5.13 acres. Probably, uh, 2.23 acres. So maybe he makes this lot a little bigger, and the north property is still conforming in frontage on Old Kellyville Road and in frontage down the other side of Greenwood Road. This, this area is kind of disconnected from, you know, the bulk of property from itself. That's basically, simple boundary line adjustment.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Nope. Any questions from the public? Seeing none? I'll make a motion that we accept 2023-LLA-01.
I'll second it.
Second from Toby. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Jeff's abstaining. So. We approve. Thank you very much. Sorry if you guys, that's embarrassing. That's really pretty embarrassing.
You could say, we'd be accepted, and those people should stand. You got, you know, second.
Enjoy your evening. Well, I got all the facts, I know.
Mylar, just my call.
That was on the, uh.
And you, you're, uh.
Uh, professional guy, I didn't want to bring it over. Okay, correct.
There are, there are. Hold it, wait. Yeah.
Okay. So you, uh, so you, uh, you, uh, you're rid of a loss. I think that's the whole of the case.
I just want to sign it, yeah. Thank you.
And help you out with the cases. Yeah. Yeah, they're cute. I got your baby, yeah. Okay, moving along. Christina, under admin.
Did you want to do the main minutes? Did you want to look at the main minutes prior to move? In the agenda?
Yep.
Do you want to do that first, or I can do the Mylars?
Okay.
Whatever you wish.
Um, well, I look at the minutes first.
Unless, unless you want to defer the minutes.
No, I think we can get the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? The minutes? If they're in order, you could still vote on that. We've gone through that before. Minutes. Sixty. Three. Is your motion to accept?
Our motion, let me accept.
It's your second.
Sure.
Second one, yeah. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Jeff will. So those are accepted. Okay, you want to do your Mylars now?
Yeah. I'll bring up, uh, tonight's case first, just because you guys have a clearer memory, and then I'll remind you of the other ones, to make sure you're signing. I do have Sharpies on the table. And I don't know if Jeff should sign. I can pick some, so that's, yes.
I already did that once before. The second, second time round, isn't it? Uh, but yeah, in, you weren't here for the meetings, or any of that stuff. Or, or, or five.
Paper for Jeff North, just so you know, I'm not scamming you with another one. Subdivision is mine. Joe Kim, that's a joke, I don't have to visit. Here's another one for North, who usually do two. Mine is just in. This is signed, thank you. The next Mylar is need.
Yep.
This is the one that goes to find his back. I have the approval by the D E S for the sub, which is what we were waiting for, because, okay, so, it's blurry, so, hold on. So this is the Mylar, and then the two papers underneath.
She's got my force.
Approval for septic?
Remember, the need, this was your, are you, I don't think you're, should you sign. You don't care on that. Just remember that they had to approve, and I didn't really quite understand.
They had to approve that they could get a septic system on the other lot.
Okay, well, thank you. I forgot.
Was that, was that done?
Yes. Yes, approval for the subdivision.
Subdivision.
But that's given based on a septic being able to, that's how, that's the rationale for the approval for the subdivision.
Yeah, they wouldn't approve it without.
No. Without the septic. And I have, I was holding this, and Patrick had called me and said, this is needed for us to move forward, and it, it is approved. Do you feel comfortable?
Yeah. Got many copies of this you need?
We usually make two signed paper, oh, they gave a ton of them, because you don't need to sign all of those. Usually, they'll get four. Thank you. Okay, the, that's one is one six times on every street, but then you'll remember that. Hopefully, the Ruger mill, lot line adjustment, that I called an annexation, that I've just recently switched to an LL. And this has three separate Mylars, you saw them all the night, and three separate pieces of paper in, with each Mylar. Does that make sense? They're kind of all on top of each other. You may want to, but we have, and we saw these three that night, all three separate.
You want to keep these together?
Absolutely, yes, thank you.
That's me.
Thank you.
This is, I already forgot the other.
North.
Yeah, north. It's not north, so it's somebody else, yeah.
Well, it's north. Right, it is.
Steph, what was your name?
Steph.
Steph Scott, Steph.
Thank you. I can always go back and read who the names are, but thank you, they are now and later.
You can have that.
The Mylars are all showing the same lot line. I think they're being used based on government requirements for the final workforce housing application.
There's no title there.
We asked, remember, that's what we, remember, they all said. They all said preliminary, and I made sure that was taken off. Could you at least can sign whatever? Or do you want me to go back to them?
Is this right, Ken?
This.
They took off preliminary and added the block.
I remember this is your.
What's that?
That you wanted this plan a certain way.
Trump, they go back.
It's, it's what you wanted, right?
Yes.
You're comfortable with it?
Yeah, I mean, what I seen looks.
Let me go back and get, uh, pull the original piece file. So you know you're looking at the same thing.
I really don't remember why. I remember, we had a problem with it.
And this is related to tanks.
It's something you're used to looking at, so.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It's in the minutes on page three, under, um, 2023 minutes, uh, 01.
Yeah.
And it has the, um, more than that. Then it's on page three.
I don't have my minutes anymore.
That one, Karen, it's a, it's a, the Ruger lot, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. No, no, we're not looking at the Ruger lot.
I didn't think you were, you're looking at a different case.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was Jim Burrows who had a problem with the other one.
Yeah.
Right.
No, actually, I think that one was me.
What's the name?
I think, I think that's the one, um, down at the mill, right? On the other side of the mill. They were trying to get the, along the river right there by the substational.
Oh, yeah.
But I can't remember exactly what and why.
Now, they were, we were, you know, making sure they put sidewalks in. Remember that much.
Yeah, I don't remember. Here, it's too many.
Page four. Remember that. I think mine may have ended somehow. It was here at one time.
Here's the page four.
What were the conditions that we approved it with?
Side block.
That's all it was?
That's receipt of application to begin, yep.
I think plan to include signature block and remove preliminary from plan.
And they, so we are missing a signature, so here's the, here's the originals. They, they sent us that just to make sure they at least match, but you're right, there's not the signing blocks. Is there a signing block on the third, on my chip?
No.
No, it's just on one.
Just the front one is.
So, do you want to?
Yeah.
Probably.
Technically, yeah.
Yes.
Semantically? They didn't, so this one has a signing block. That one's fine. That does not, so we can't sign them. So this is.
You could absolutely sign the one.
So this is, that's sheet one of three. Okay. So technically, signing that one.
They just want.
Sign all three, that's the reason we sign all three.
I, fully, it's up to you. That one could be submitted, because it was done correctly. They supposedly need the other two kind of different viewpoints to get through the purchase, but though there's no signing blocks and the signature, but this one's, they followed it, you could do that one, although it would be up to you to hold them all till they're all correct. Whatever you.
I'm going to hold them all and just have them fix the Mylar.
Okay.
This is what we asked them to do.
Absolutely. I fully.
Conditions.
I, I, I thought, I, I had looked at them, and I, I originally said I don't need three, and they agreed, and then they came back and said, no, we do want three, and then, so anyways, and I'll fix it. Wait a minute. I'll figure. I'm only that strong. Absolutely.
You can write out Mylar.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll call the, I'll call the, uh, the surveyor tomorrow to submit new ones, and then I'll.
Did just fix them.
Absolutely, and they might ask me to call people in.
Don't lose that check on that first one. Does it, no, hanging off the.
This check actually goes to the north property.
Yeah. It was just going to fall off.
Oh, yeah, well, then, thank you. I'll make sure, I know Patty Hill paid.
All right, is that all? You got more?
Nope, that was it, that was all. We did Blue Box, Made North, and signed up, oh, we, no apologies. Jesus, I'm so sorry. Okay, does everyone remember Blue Box? If not, we can refresh.
Was there any condition?
Let me go, oh, yeah, I don't believe what's on this one, I'm sure. Uh, Blue Box, wants the case to unsew.
She loses her voice and she gets all out of whack.
That was not, was that in the main minute? Was that in the main minute, minutes? That was very recent. That was the mobile home down there, in the United industrial thing.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, how did we, how did we accept it? Thank you.
You're welcome. You can keep some, actually.
Well, I, I had some right here, but she grabbed them with everything else, which that's fine. Usually, I'm quick to get rid of them. I don't have the, it talks about the, uh, accepting the case, but I've done this. Oh, as complete, second minute, exact plan. So didn't remove? I don't see any conditions listed here, so. So down at, right, page two there? Yeah. Third, third paragraph at the bottom, it says, the motion passed forward to nothing, but I don't, they accepted it, but I don't see any condition. Where's the motion? So in that, says here, Chairman Burnham agreed here in the public, the recumbent, Mr. Lucio made a motion to accept case 2023. It was seconded by you, and the motion passed forward to nothing. But I don't see conditions listed, that's the only. Yeah, so, all right, let's do it.
From now on, I will be copies of the acceptance, and so you can know that, so we don't, so you'll know what.
None. That'll be good.
Okay.
I don't think I have a check for that. You weren't, you weren't here, it was the Ruger one that.
Yeah.
It was, it was complicated, I can't remember why, but I remember feeling that, man, what did we just do?
He, he was presenting via, and it was very confusing, I will state.
And they had some deadline or something, but it wasn't.
That's right, Captain. I will state that the Z B A has voted for all cases to have at least one representative here, because it's so difficult, and I, I was asked, is it as difficult with the planning board? I says it's not very difficult, if they only present over, that you can always discuss that and vote to have it.
There was something else going on, is that, but I can't remember where it was.
You know, it was the preliminary, there was no business to sign.
So, we got the same problem here. So, the top two pages are good, these two are not, no title block, and this one's good.
Now, why do we need, in theory, I typically submit one Mylar. Is he just giving you different views?
Well, it's the whole set.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, what am I, oh, he Mylared the.
The whole set.
The sets.
And this is the one.
That's the only one for the, we don't.
This is the cover sheet.
Yeah, you don't submit, you don't, I mean, we're going to build it, so no, this is, you just need to do the subdivision.
And this is the same sheet.
He gave the, you know.
Right, the two of them.
He, he gave two Mylars, and then we, I.
That's good, that's good.
So these are, are right over.
And this is a duplicate.
Right, right over.
And all of that. Those, those are good.
These two.
And the cover sheet, you don't really need to sign either, but that's why I'm signing.
It's just, I would just sign it.
Yeah.
Put it in there.
He spent a lot of money on it, so, yeah. Okay.
So a way to go, huh?
Right, it's very fast.
And that's kind of weird for me. Don't lose your minutes, Toby.
Well, every time, every time I think I, I'm good with them, we end up asking a question like that.
That'll be all for me, Ken.
You good there?
I am, I'm also administrative wise.
All right, so communication, so that's admin, communications to the board, anything? Anybody got it? Okay. Um, let's go to public comment. We have a couple members of public. Mr. Hubert.
I'm Dr. Hubert, I serve on the Conservation Commission here in Newport, and one of the questions that we have is the community survey that you're mixed up.
Yep.
What is the deadline for the survey itself? Is there?
June 30th.
June 30th.
It's on, it's on there, do it, let me get a copy of the survey. Let me, let me get that, for everyone to look at.
Where are you making trail?
I don't know, I just, like, this is a town.
And my other question is, will we be able to get a copy of the results of that survey?
Yeah, we plan to publish that. So we went out with the survey to gather the data, as, when you heard us earlier, talking about the master plan.
Right, yes.
So we're trying to gather data to study the master plan and update, is what we're trying to do.
Exactly, that's what we're in this step to do as well.
Okay. So, from what perspective? For you guys?
As far as, we are the natural resource inventory.
Okay.
Looking to hire to have that done over the next year.
Okay.
And we're looking at, uh, white people, looking how that fits in with the community survey.
Yep.
You know, or we're looking, are we protecting the properties that.
We need to protect and.
Exactly, through the master plan, and, uh, you know, we're seeing some, I think it's a deviation over the last 10 years or so from what the plan specified, so.
And when do you anticipate getting yours back?
I think it'll be done sometime early next year. We're not sure, we don't have all the details yet, but, uh, Moosewood, Ecological is looking to be our, our resource for doing that, natural resource inventory.
So, yeah, so on the front of our survey, it's right here, June 30th. We're set today. Um, so we want to get this in, because it is the planning board's mission, if you will. Um, it's not working on the master plan, because it needs to be updated. And Christina, we had talked, uh, Mr. Irwin had asked about the master plan and the building inventory study. Now, didn't?
Built, building inventory.
Building inventory, now, a building assessment.
Okay, so I apologize, is that presently in the 2010 master plan?
That was the question I asked.
I, okay, oh my word, I am so sorry, I do not believe it is, but I could go get a master plan.
Well, if you could get the most recent.
Abs, the 2000, absolutely. Oh, you have one, look, but, I, the 2010 is the most recent.
Okay, and you had it later.
Wait, no, I apologize, 2012, I apologize, 2012 master plan.
Okay.
And I see the most recent, but I don't think that the 84 was redone in 12, and so it needs to be part of the master plan, not completed, but that in the master plan, this will be done, and you have to, that funded, because it's a contract.
I'll go get you a copy.
Perfect.
But I do not believe that's in it. I will say, the C C's, uh, timeline kind of fits in with yours, because I think it might take us easily the rest of the year.
Oh, it's.
And maybe, right, it could go out early next year, whether you did it, oh, 23, because you did most of the work, or 24, we're still.
Probably 24.
Or, I don't.
But I thought, didn't the towns' insurance people do, or didn't the town do a building assessment survey recently?
But I think it's.
I'm talking a couple years.
The towns' buildings.
Right.
Probably. This is the town.
The town.
All, everybody knew it.
Right, but I'm talking the town-owned properties that did an assessment.
I could ask, I don't believe I've seen that.
Right. Who did that last time?
Upper Valley Lake Sound of Regional Planning Council. You, you previous board contracted with them in 84 to do it, so this would be something that you would include in the master plan and put it out to bid to have a similar type organization updated.
Okay. Didn't, um, didn't they do the 2012 one, too?
The master plan.
Yeah.
I believe they did.
And they also did their early version of this.
Right.
We just didn't. Yeah. We talked about, we just didn't use them to do this, because we just basically copied what was done, streamlined it to get more information.
Exactly.
Um, without going out to somebody, but there are pieces, yes, we have to go out and get that expertise.
Right. And the, the question.
This could be your copy.
Have you have it? The question was, the cost of the Upper Valley now, is it more cost effective to look for somebody else? I would suspect you would bid it anyway, they may come in as a lower bid, but it's not, it's probably a two-year contract, maybe, I would think, to do this analysis, but at least as a, as a foundation. But it has to be included in the master plan as part of the work of the master plan.
Can I see it?
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
I can.
And it will then drive, if you will, the extension of the historic district to go right down the Main Street, and maybe go up Main Street, because it's a very narrow, it's just the oval, you know, the common, and you can look and see that the historic district should be farther because of the buildings, and up a little, like, um, I don't think, uh.
Dunk, 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 dunk.
Get the end of the common.
It's just, yeah, it's common to common, really, yeah, so, um, but this has all the buildings in it, or as many as were done, and it also identifies.
I'll make copies for everyone.
National Register of Historic Places, and many of those in there qualified at that time to go on the register, and they may have chosen not to. I don't know the process of doing that, whether it was an economic issue, but it's something that, as the Historic Commission will be looking into, to see what else we want to put on the Historic Register, and the, and the net effect of that.
Right. Yeah, okay. Yeah, because, I mean, if it goes on, sometimes it's binding as well.
Exactly, and you know, people get concerned when you identify a district, and it's, it's not that onerous, what you can do and what you can't do, because it's really facade. Inside is really not controlled.
Right.
As much as the facades, and right now, we're very lucky, when people are redoing whatever they're redoing, the integrity of the building is, is good, and the integrity of the outside is pretty good, and, you know, so far, there's no indication that that's going to change, but in the master plan, you want to make sure of that. You know, like, I think in this, I haven't seen this one, but in the, in the earlier one, was that whole thing of the second Main Street?
What if that, the reading?
Yeah, it, you were probably in nappies then. It was to redo, it was to redo Depot, we can back, hold back, and make a second Main Street.
Okay.
Go through the parking lots, and the, the Depot and all of that, and now the Chamber has the Depot, and I'm pretty sure they'll keep the integrity of that building.
Right.
So.
Oh, Betty, could I keep that and make copies?
You have one.
In my office?
Yes.
Oh my God, help me.
Yeah.
Okay, I will find it, I have to bring you paperwork tomorrow anyways, but, Betty, you take this back.
So, to get back to the conversation we haven't got to, I mean, all these parts, pieces, we need to compile and have a work session to put that all together, you know, and this was our first start to get it, get started, gather some data, do some study, um, the other, I don't know if you ever, you must have saw the other booklet that was, like, 12 pages and-
In the back.
In the back of that, yeah, and nobody really-
Fifteen pages.
I don't think the survey got 10% response, like, that done.
Back of the book.
How much response have you gotten?
We've gotten, well, slightly over 10%, I will say, I have extras, if people have not filled them out.
What is that?
The survey, like, I was thinking that-
What is, what is over 10%?
I think I'm, I would have to recount, I think we get more in every day, I don't have time to, to then count then divide, I've, so-
I'll send you mine as soon as I do it.
Absolutely, and then, Jeff, I don't know if you or your wife has done that, I'd love for you to respond, if you have it.
Do you go to a retest?
Absolutely, but some people, a few people-
No, no, I've done mine.
Would you like to? Do you want another one, so both of you could argue about it, now you're all sad, okay, the more, I want as many people as want to respond, obviously.
Wait, how, how did they go, just in regular mail?
They went out to you directly.
They came last weekend, I think they came.
Oh no.
Was it, was it, maybe a few weeks?
You were in Mexico by that.
I have not opened a piece of mail in five years.
Oh.
I think it was more like, a month ago, was it?
I think you're right, Mr. Hubert.
Wait, what, uh, so, yeah, it was in, um, anything else?
They wanted to talk about? I think, I think down the road, you know, some of us will come and do a, like I said, a joint work session.
Yeah, I mean, multiple groups, we gotta get through this thing, and, uh, but it is, like I said, it is our mission, and we're trying to streamline, and if we need to go out to outside, that's what we gotta do, and-
If we're looking at the land use suggestions, the water app prefers, you know, protections.
Right.
There should be a protection zone, the wetlands is obviously one of our core responsibilities, as Conservation Commission, so.
Yep, agreed.
I think, I think expanding the historic district is an excellent idea, because it only takes one rogue person to, suddenly, you go, what happened to the facade of that building, and then all, the whole character of Main Street takes on that.
Exactly.
Something you may not have seen.
So we can delve into it at greater depth when you get to the point that you're ready to start putting the pieces together, but I have to, I have a 7:30.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, anything else from public?
We're good.
Okay.
I am continuing to add, and I think I'm gonna start adding, just whether you covered or not, along with my other boards, which I oversee, but, but just a master plan. Whether the meeting goes too long, and they have no time to discuss it, we should just be having it on everyone's, even if we get little snippets.
It's, yeah, so let's, uh, let's put it in the minutes, um, 'cause the next meeting we should have gotten, would be beyond our date, so we should start to talk about that.
And I, it was discussed last time, that I would start the compiling, compiling of the data, so then, once I get it into a spreadsheet, then that's where you can make pie chart, where you can ask for anything.
So, let's put it on for the next meeting, as an agenda item.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if it's simply, they're in, and Christina's continuing to compile, then we can leave it at that, or we can go to the next step.
Or continue to read through the plan itself, even though we don't have the survey results, I will say, that Jeff, uh, this, this plot line adjustment came in only get the last day, and not that it matters, but I thought we would go, I go, oh, we'll have nothing on the agenda, this will be perfect just to meet, and that, which is all good, we did it.
Well, we can talk about some of these other pieces.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we go to the board, um, I had a couple of things that I've been asked about in public, and I wasn't sure, and I was trying to do some reading and check up on. Number one is, where do we land with tiny houses?
Tiny houses, and I'll start, I think, when we, I gave you all copies of the zoning manuals too, tiny houses, or homes, forget what you call them, homes under 600 square feet are not allowed in the town of Newport in any zone. Except via a variance. We presently have six tiny homes per, that have all received, it's a case by case, that have all received, uh, variances, it is something to consider, because from 30 years ago, lifestyles have changed, and everyone isn't living in the Cape with the two acres and blah, 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 but that would be obviously chats, but that's where it is presently.
So we have six that were voted and approved by the zoning board?
By the zoning board on a case by case basis.
Can we get a list of those?
Absolutely.
Because there's some, I mean, I drive by a couple of them, like, that's not allowed.
Absolutely not.
And I wanna, I'd like to know that, so that if I'm asked a question, I can answer in form.
Certainly, there's a fine line between a tiny home and a camper's.
Well, not anymore. No, because they're two different things.
Well, they may be two different things, I just mean, that's, it's a man.
They can work again, I will say, we require full permitting for tiny homes like regular homes, we require a well and a septic, if there's no town water, town sewer, tiny, and they're all-
Concrete, and what?
Concrete.
Concrete and tie downs, they are as scrutinized as a manufactured home or a modular oral zip.
So, once they get their variance, there's no grace period, they have to meet the permit conditions, as you just stated.
They, they could come in whenever, in a two-year period, they have two years, the variance stays in place for two.
I know, but, in order to, so they get the variance, okay, you can go ahead and do it small, okay?
Then they have, yes.
When they get their building permit to do it, they have to have plans and everything ready with septic, water, all that.
As, or I am not, I am not allowed to give any permits for a new home without a proof septic to construct, and I need the number from the state, I need the plans, I need how the site's gonna look, I don't, I am not required to make sure there's a well, but you need the well for the septic, and you wouldn't be allowed to move in if you had no well, 'cause the septic wouldn't work. But yes.
So, like, I wanted to-
I know, we're all thinking the same one.
They don't-
So the one at the top of the hill?
Dartmouthers.
What, top of the hill?
Across from the recycle station.
Uh, yes, she-
My glove road.
Yes, she has a well and a septic.
Where?
I don't know if they've been installed yet, we have not used-
I see a brush plug.
No problem with it.
We have not inspected, we have not inspected that, I believe there's not the cement foundation or the tie downs, and no, she's not supposed to be living in it.
She has a, hold on, I might even have the ECA number.
Oh, you did some snooping. No, I just, no, I'll get the work, I've been asked.
Yeah, I have.
And I just, oh, you did work.
I did the driveway.
Right.
But, and I mean, I'm scheduled to do the septic.
I have the contract.
To Christina's point, they've already moved in.
Are you sure?
And nothing is signed up, hey, hey, I don't even give you start, don't mess, don't even give me start.
I've dealt with the-
That's the reason I asked.
I've dealt with the RVs, they're in the legal system, I, so, I could check on it tomorrow, but she absolutely has, and she comes in pretty often, and has gotten, and I even think there was an issue with her well, where she placed it, because she has such a tiny property, and she couldn't steal water from, you know what I mean? Uh, she got approval to place a well in a certain section, I could get all that paperwork, if you'd like to see.
Sign a waiver.
You want the signed waiver.
No, you sign a waiver because your well is too close to the neighbor's.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
So you pay her after the neighbor.
I see, yes.
If you have problems, that's what you have.
So she has all the approvals to, again, she does not have her certificate of occupancy, is it difficult to go after a certificate of occupancies on private property? Yes.
Christina, hold on, you should tell them what I was told.
What?
About the town's policy to deal with these sort of things.
Which is what?
That you have a certain grace period of somebody's building, that you guys have always kinda let somebody-
Live on the property.
On the property, see, I questioned this myself.
Not in the home, and, well, you know, if they're building it, because typically, we, you can't, the thing is, it's more of a state rule. Again, it's hard on private property, but you are not allowed to live in a home that does, you do not have town sewer or a working septic, which you need water. Getting someone off the property, if they never, like, say she never, say she never calls us for inspection, she never calls for a CO, she never installs a septic, then I have to start a legal process, it usually takes about two years.
How long do you need to do that, though?
I have not even got, 'cause she's usually really diligent, will I say, construction in Newport has skyrocketed? We are so forward, and my building inspector virtually no longer works, I do, she, she has done her due diligence, and I do not check up necessarily, but I could.
Is it-
If you guys-
Start, does it start with, uh, this is, it would be more building department than planning. This, yeah, this, is it a warning letter to start with?
So what, very rarely does this happen, 'cause who wants to do a new home without a septic?
I know, but I-
Right, so when it does, well, it's rare, I usually go to the state, the state's oversight, is it really in a home without a working septic? It is even my fight, because I've got all the-
Here's the thing, how do you even prove that somebody's there within a month or two? There, there's other ones in this town that people are living in, that have been going on a heck of a long longer.
Right, well, I mean, the problem with this one is, it's right where you see it.
This, your problem with this one, Ken? Ken, the problem with this one I'm talking about, is you can't hide from this one either, and you're looking at it, and you don't even know it.
No, I, I agree, they're there, oh yeah, but like I said, I mean, that's why, I mean, first was, my simple question was the, the tiny house rule, where are we at? And you explained that, okay, and then, then it gets into the permitting side, okay, for building permit thing, that's a, that's the issue we're talking about. I was usually coming at it from the planning board side to start with, okay, but that one just jumps right out at you when you go by. And there are others that, they dress them up, and I've seen, there's one down Kellyville, right by the cap place, that has a camper right on the front lawn, in front of the brick house.
You mean with all the tanks?
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, you know.
Let Christine explain.
That, that has been, so, I have sent a letter, giving them 30 days, no response, it went to legal. They sent a letter, it is now going to the court system, again, let's just pretend, which I think they're still living in there, I thought, let's just pretend, the day we go to court, they come in and they say we moved out, I swear to God, that's the end of it, and they can move back in, and we, we have to start all over again, it's happened before, and we will start all over again, but I'm not joking, all they have to do is say we've unplugged it, and they're gone, and then, a week later, I would have, I, this happened at one other property that finally has gone away, they would clean it up, about six months later, it was bad, it felt worse, and, and we had just, even Hunter said, this is ridiculous, and I had to start again. Right now, I probably have 30 junkyard cases, including two RV issues at different stages, it's ridiculously time consuming, and we do go to court for a lot of-
Like I said, I was now- There really is, um, an RV ruled in the town of Newport, right?
Thirty, yes, 30 days, but it cannot be hooked up by anything, no pouch, no key, so you can hook it up to power, but then you can't have anyone living in it, you cannot, and someone can live in it for, for 30 days, to keep it warm, or, but you can't have someone live in it and hook it up, and if someone's visiting, they could visit up to 30 days, they can use it for sleeping, but they are not supposed to be li- working and living in town, they're to be visiting.
And that's a pretty slow.
And that is allowed, so, it's very hard, someone in theory could move out for a week and come back in.
So I guess, they're going back to my question.
Yes.
The tiny house rule, is there, they got a variance?
Yes.
With, I'd like to see a list of those variances.
I will bring a list of the variances, and I will bring Sandra Gray's entire case, because again, she did her due diligence with all the paperwork.
From the planning board, from my position here on the planning board, if I had the variance to look at.
Yeah.
I'm done as a planning board member.
But you wanna make sure I do my job right, too.
But that's a building inspection, that's a different purview.
Right, well, it's undermined.
Right, I mean, from a town's person's point of view, yeah, I mean, if we let this get out of hand, I mean, it gets out of hand fast.
Fast, yeah.
And it's not unlike the next issue I'm gonna bring up, for the, the grace period and the same thing, okay, so I, I guess I was done with that issue, are we all done with the tiny houses?
I, 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 I have some questions.
Just let Jeff speak, and then I'll speak.
I just think there's some, you know, I don't know what the rulings are on them, but to me, it's like, there was an era when they were mobile homes, they were on wheels, they got rolled in, everyone said, no more, right? And there's RVs, I own a fifth wheel, big fifth wheel, from my land, I've been taxed on it, when I didn't live there, um, parked behind, parked behind the gym, because we, we, we go and we leave, but I got in trouble for it, because I was allowed to ride my property, I hook it up, get ready, go camping for a month, I come and go with it, so I'm just saying, but they really aren't any different, none of them are different, nor is a small house, it has on a frame, you got wheels, so I don't know what makes it different, but I know that all of a sudden you see, or suspect you start seeing a lot of this little subdivision, you're gonna see, I want an acre, I want an acre, I want an acre, and you take little things, the next thing you know, you got tiny houses going up everywhere, which, which are really just mobile homes, that are made out of wood, with some clapboards on the side and an asphalt roof, and really, what's the difference, and, and is this a federal, um, differentiation that suddenly this is coming through, or is it a town or state, or what's, what makes my RV different than that?
What's the basis for granting the variance?
That's-
Okay, so, I think Jeff brought up a few things, and then yours are slightly different, I think it's on a case by case basis, there's five criteria that you have to, oh, get approval on all of them. Obviously, I can bring in every case, and you could read, because they're different for all of them, I will say, with that property, it, I, I, I might say the wrong zone, I think it's rural.
That's not Kellyville?
Where's Kellyville?
No, it's not.
It's such, it was such a small problem, her, she, well, she filled out all five, the hardship was that it would be very difficult to have any kind of real business on the property, 'cause it's so tiny for like parking, or lighting, or safe, blah, 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 the things required for businesses, and that any normal-sized house, based on the size, was also be incredibly difficult, this was a subdivision prior to 1955, which grandfather said, so she, so there is allowed to have a house on that property, and there is considerable concern that who would ever come along and build a three-bedroom family home, that you couldn't fit a septic, and so in essence, it makes it obsolete to the owner, and that was the hardship, but don't, I don't wanna speak for that, I would rather if you read the case.
Well, I wanna say, I mean, 'cause I, I understand the criteria.
But that's on that one.
And I've said it before, variances, at least in every other town, are supposed to be, they're almost, they should be next to, like, impossible to get, where, you know, it's not finance, it's not this, I mean, variances are usually very troubling to get.
I usually, it's that bit.
Because you're giving up on your values to do it.
It's, it's that, it's the hardship, your land, the land itself has to have a hardship, not based on monetary, because it never was just a monetary, that makes it unique to give it the exception, that's the fifth one, I will say, Jeff, that I believe, which doesn't, is meaningless, but it goes back to the conservation, that our subdivision laws, no, Newport's subdivision laws are not strict enough, you can subdivide any property, the rural zone included, down to less than an acre legally, and that's in the rural zone that was supposed to be our farming, I know towns, specifically the town I live in, I wouldn't say you wanna adopt our zoning, but in the strictest zoning of the town I happen to live in, we are one, single-family residences only, they don't allow anything less than two acres, not saying we should do that, but I do think, to protect some of the natural resources, just because you mentioned an acre, forget an acre, you're allowed to go way smaller than that.
Some of the ones on First, Second, Third, when we looked at things, we had a case up there, they were a quarter acre.
They know-
My, my house on South Main Street, I only own a quarter acre, it's a two-bedroom house, but-
The one on First was 12 feet by 100, they were the, they were the piano keys. But that, but-
Like thirty of them.
That was pre-zoning.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
But, but I do think you guys should think about protecting, not letting everything just get chewed apart, because this town, everyone wants it, I get called every day, and have you noticed these things have skyrocketed, people are selling it for tons of money, and they're real, and I just think, that's my, that's my opinion.
Health laws are just-
They're flying, and they're going for a ton of money, Newport is becoming impossible to purchase into, I would think that you might wanna protect it a little, that's my opinion.
Mr. Scherzer? So, so, what are the other question about, what difference, the mobile home from a tiny house from a, from an RV?
Oh, the only thing that does is, if you, someone wanted to live in a mobile home, I believe they absolutely could, I'd have to.
An RV.
I, I apologize, not a manufactured home.
We have a section on manufactured homes.
Yes.
An RV, a mobile home-
Tiny house, not a manufactured home.
A mobile home is built under HUD specifications by the federal government, and RV is something totally different.
Yeah, it's on a frame, it's on a strong frame.
Coming under a Voca code, that's totally different, it's all built under different codes.
Those are like a transportation device.
But that's kinda like, uh, modular houses, they're built exactly the same, it's a Voca code.
Yeah, agreed.
Although I will say-
But RVs, the funny thing about RVs and the whole history of it is, and I asked my dad about, that's where this all stems from, is talking to my dad, and he said, back when we were in high school, Ken, there was a bunch of families living at Crow's Nest Campground.
Full time.
All, full-time, all their kids were going to school, a whole bunch of them, you probably remember them.
And paying taxes.
And not paying any taxes, and that's when this whole thing started, but it's also good, because we really wanna- But it's also good, because do we really want to, man, I'm living in a camper in everybody's backyard? More than, more than the kids?
Well, the other side, I mean, it's, you're just, it's violation of all the rules. I mean, accessory dwelling-
Six hundred square feet.
Six hundred square feet, permanent structure, I mean, it brings in a whole host of different-
I, I will say, I believe Jeff though, just let's think, if Jeff took his recreational vehicle, took the wheels off it, put it on slab, did the hurricane tie-downs, and then you met all the other insulation and electrical and snow load standards, that would become a, I don't know what you'd call it, because people are making homes out of those metal boxes that are the shipping containers.
Well, that's why I'm going back.
So don't think you can't convert it, it's just that you would also have to have a well and a septic, and it would have to be permanently hooked up.
So the tiny houses have to come off the wheels?
Yes, I would, I'll have to go, and have to be hurricane tie-down, and that's why I-
But where is that in any written rules?
That is, that's the building inspecting, two thousand and eighteen International Business Code, safeties. So you could convert your RV, I believe, you maybe have to beef it up.
I'm just, I, I, not that I would want to, I'm just wondering where it's gonna go, Alex and talking about, yeah, you don't want to have mother-in-laws in behind the house, so if you buy the tiny house, roll it in there, and say, well, this one's a tiny house, and here I am.
It's an accessory dwelling. That's what it boils down to.
Right, so if you, you know, if our rules say you can't have an accessory dwelling on that piece of property, then you can't have it.
Right.
This case is a individual piece of property, where it is gonna be the primary. Like, yeah, this is a little different, this is different. But what, yeah, what you're gonna get to is, like I said, the RV or the tiny house become that accessory dwelling, which may or not be approvable, but they're gonna pop up all over the place. I mean, yeah, finances say everybody's gonna go, and that's the trend, right, now, is to go tiny house.
Tiniest.
Um, and, you know, they're gonna shove them in all over the place.
Right, I would say, what stops, say, you know, say, well, I got this twenty acres of land, and I really don't know what to do with it, I'm gonna plop a road in here, and we're gonna call this tiny house village, and-
Absolutely.
I think the, the real-
Raker locks each, and they go.
Thing about this is, is we need to find out, are we gonna continue to keep giving these variances? Or do we need to make a change to getting these variances?
I said it before.
That is, that is the real-
I said before, I said, I quote-unquote, I said, we give out variances like chicklets, okay? For everything, where is, I've been to municipalities where, I mean, you have to come in begging to get a variance.
I avoid zoning boards like the plague, except, oh, this town is different, I have done a lot of building, and I have never once, I follow the code, because you're, you're gonna get hell if you don't.
Usually it's a lot harder to get a variance in this town. And I can tell you that, that I remember doing, down on Paradise Road, I bought a section of railroad track there, and I did a small subdivision there, three, three lots with a building. And what I had to go through-
I know that property, I think.
Yeah, what I had to go through to get that, to get the road, had to come in just the right way, and it was really, really hard. You had to make this long sliver and all this stuff, it was, it was hard. So I don't know how hard it is now, but it was, it was, I couldn't, well, I couldn't get the variance. The thing is, I had to really get creative with the, my plan, I had to, get some river, get some road from it.
I mean, you, I mean, to get a variance, we'll still exhaust every possible means of everything else, before you can even be considered for that. But they gave it to them, so if we could get the list-
Absolutely. They've given a lot of them.
I know.
Well, only six, only six tiny homes, but a lot of their, their, I will say, your ADU ordinance is, is pretty tight. First of all, we are not allowed by state law to not allow ADUs. So with that said, ADUs are allowed in every zone via a special exception. The rules are pretty strict, and two, the two main rules are, it has to be encompassed within the structure of the home, or it has to be attached directly, which most people are assuming you convert a garage or something to the tech. So you can't have just the home and a little, another little ADU thing. So your tiny, ADUs are, are pretty tight, which a lot of people get upset about. They want the dual holds everywhere. So again, just so you know, that they're, I consider it pretty good, the ADU.
Well, when we, when we did it, the spirit of it was that you would go to the zoning board and say, look, grandma is in bad shape, she has no money, I'd like to move her into my backyard for a year or so. So they'd give you a special exception for a year, and then it had to disappear, that was what, when we discussed it, you remember this discussion?
And I was anti, I'm kinda anti-tiny home, for a bunch of different reasons, but we had that conversation with Burr, I remember Burr talking about, because you could put the ADU on the way-back forty, and then, forget about it, somebody moves out, and then, you got, so that was the conversation.
It has to be attached.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
I will state, right, you didn't want, you wanted to make sure it had to be attached. I will state, there used to be rules that you couldn't rent an ADU, it was for the, and truly, that, there's no way to regulate, and that's fully, it's not legal, they can rent them, they can let people live in them for free, they can let eighteen families live in if they want, or zero. Oh, so there's no oversight. Matter of fact, I believe at the state level, it's being pushed. They want more homes on more properties, they want to get, it's been, this state is doing the same thing. They want to get rid of rural areas, and they want them to be packed with humans.
I think you'll find that that one's pretty airtight.
No, I mean, in fact, it was good to get to the subvariance, but like I said, we had the list, I mean, people ask me, and I'd like to have.
Right, but there is another one, it's very obvious that's not airtight at all.
Okay, so enough on that subject.
Okay.
The next one I had was storage boxes.
Yes.
Blue box, whatever they're called, whoever, that's a brand.
Yes, so storage boxes, someone's renting to Phil, and Blue Box picks it up, is that all we're talking about?
Yeah, or just a storage box. Or, you can buy them, they stack them, you can stack them, they're being converted to live-ins.
Yes.
You can do, so, I guess, the initial question is, so we have storage facilities, and they're permanent and approved, not a big deal. But now they're doing this rental thing, and I get, if, if you're renting one, to put your tools in, to renovate a place, and instead they're there for a period of time, and then they leave. But they fall under shed if you bring it in in a semi-permanent way, right?
The trend in this, this is very interesting. If anyone wanted to buy up every two-hundred-dollar old eighteen-wheeler thingy, ten years ago, you'd be very wealthy right now. Because they're going to five to twenty thousand. So, with that said, there's nothing that can, that allows, that does not, that prevents people from putting a structure, it can be made of anything, we have no rules against this, as long as it's safe and meets code. So they come in, they get, they have to permit for them, they get inspected, but, and they are, unless someone converts it to a home. But the only way to convert to a home is to be under six hundred, over six hundred square feet, if it's not, which I have never seen. They're used to storage, you're allowed to have, and we have no limit on sheds either in this town, which is cray cray. Cray cray, so, and you, and they could just set, put them up.
I thought we did have a shed, one shed, two hundred square feet.
And to vi, to violate the setbacks of the five-by-five, and any other sheds had to meet the-
And you can have a shed.
That violates the setback.
Only one shed, you can only have one shed that violates, it's too close to the line.
Yes, and the other sheds have to-
There are no, there are no many sheds.
You could have as many sheds as you want, which most towns do not allow, well, some towns only allow one shed on any property. Have to, which I know that just because I, yeah.
I was trying to do some pre-reading.
So they could put, they could put thirty of them, which would look, by my, horrific. And, but there's nothing I can do, so that should be a main topic, because people, they're, they're cheap, they're watertight, they're an excellent thing for storage units, they're not actually that cheap.
But they look like, huh?
But they, and, and there's, there's no limit in this town. And, and a lot of people are putting them up all over the rural area.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, my son went to one in Pennsylvania where they had outfitted the inside of it into glamping.
Absolutely.
And it was pretty nice on the inside.
They are.
There was a storage container, I mean, you know, but it, it's no longer a drop box for construction, it's-
No, they convert, so they are.
And there's, there's people that they'll buy them, you know, to, as a, and use them like a working shed, you know, a shed or a workshop.
And then they never leave.
You can cut, you could cut holes in them if you wanted.
Oh, you can do whatever, you know, I was just trying to research the, what rules there may or may not be.
I think that should be looked at, well, I think, I think the easiest way to start with it is to base, insert in zones, to only allow so many sheds. There is no limit on accessory dwellings in any zone. So in theory, just pretend, I bought a piece of property, it was private, not commercial, and they were my sheds. I could put, with the, silly, back to about a hundred of those things on there. It would look like a trucking depot or a storage facility.
Or a shed to a lot.
And, if I wanted to let people use it and rent them, who would not? I'm saying, no one's done that, but you have nothing preventing it.
It would be, it would be a pretty disgusting look to go down Teane Street or something like that, and have one area in the yard.
And again, no one's done that, but we'll see.
There's one right on North Main Street, there's one right on North Main Street that's got one floor.
I mean, we could go to Character, and they would, but-
No, you can't, or doesn't it allow?
Expanding the historic district will help with, possibly.
I mean, maybe something we gotta look at.
I, I think you should, you guys need to-
It is a trend that's out there, I mean-
Yep. These days don't go away, so one wants to see, and if the trend happens, before you know it, and they're sitting, and fifty years from now, they're still sitting, you know, it's-
They will be, these are long-term secure, the people, a lot of people are loving it, absolutely, because they're secure, they're watertight, and they're huge, they're pulling cars in them, but they're not, these things aren't going anywhere.
Well, the other side of it too, is we, we do have a sign ordinance, and it says, Blue Box on the side, and it's there for too long, you're advertising. So get your sign out there.
That might be true, I guess, so-
Or, that's on rent, or whomever it is.
The, I, so, you obviously also are in charge of the entire zoning code. So with the master plan, we should probably have the two books in front of us, and us constantly, because I do think the zoning code has not really been looked at since the eighties.
But that would be something we'd have to put together, and then get the town to vote on.
Well, you have to do a, but I do think while we're doing the, it might be at least to highlight your concerns, and let's start getting them to the town vote.
Like, like-
Before, yeah, it's a new zoning ordinance is.
Yeah, yeah, but if we need, if we want to make substantive changes to them, we have to prepare it, and it goes as a warrant to get voted on.
But I think-
Consider on some of these items.
Yeah, I think it's worthy of, I think it's worthy of a conversation, because it is a trend moving forward.
It's your permit.
That could get out of hand.
I mean, we, we could make it a rule, even if we were to, let's say, allow tiny homes, we could specify that they have to be stick-built. Yeah, or something, you know.
Uh, you cannot, that is not legal, because then, then sheds come that's, they're all, they're all, everything's pre-made. Have you seen the homes that go down the road?
Well, a shed's not a tiny home.
But homes aren't stick-built.
Well, they're made the same way.
I don't believe that would be like, all I'm saying is, I think we could tag-team a lot of ideas, like beefing up maybe your rules on, so you can't chop it up into these little pieces, give him, give it two acres, maybe.
As long as that, you can, you can subdivide, and then you just gotta wait five years, and you just re-subdivide, you wait five years, and it's like, you can keep on going down the line.
Why do you have to wait five years, is that a state rule?
The what?
Is that a state rule, waiting five years?
I, I just know the one, when I bought this property, that just came up today, that I'm, when I bought it, it was subdivided into three lots, and they said, just wait, and you can just take one of those, you can subdivide it again.
There's no waiting, you could do it the next week, the next week, the next week, the next week, the next week. United Construction does that, but they're in an industrial zone, they're selling plots like Blue Box, which is, because, and it was all, that's why you're planning, a nice industrial zone, and every time they get a new buyer, they do a new one. They, they sell a piece, like they should, and it's, it's, that's what great planning is, you have the industrial zone that's kind of pushed to the side, it's safe, it's the heavy trucking, but no, there's, I don't believe, I could look into that, Jeff, but you could turn around, you have, I know your, how much property you have there, you could go again, and you could go right now and just do, do twelve of them, just so you know.
Yeah, it's on the road.
Absolutely, there's truth to that.
I don't know the answer.
What are you planning, Ryan?
Wanted to talk about. Appreciate the conversation, it's been good.
I think we should all, I think it would be beneficial, because I'm visual, for all of you, when we're looking at the master plan, to have my zone, you guys also have a copy, and you guys can mark them, but I'm visual, I'm like that. And I would, I obviously need to start getting, but they so coincide, based on what you decide here. You have to have the rules to back, to back it up.
Well, then, planning and zoning need to be harmonious.
And that's all planning part.
And that's part of, well, not, you know, if they're giving away-
Well, beef it, beef it up.
Variances, right?
Right, but the only, the best thing you, or, so one of you moved to zoning part.
Well, so, so here's something, I mean, I've been on here for quite a while, you were on here previously for quite a while. I've yet to have a conversation with any of the zoning board, as far as, you know, planning board, zoning board, we don't, we don't talk, we don't get together, you don't, have, we don't share a mission statement?
Would you like to, because absolutely, I don't think they have a haul.
It'd be an interesting conversation.
Dude, I don't know if you know this, but you're allowed to have dual zoning board and planning board together. So if a case is going to the, to the zoning board, and then immediately go to the planning board, like the, which is kind of stalled, but there was a senior housing project up by the airport, that they would need some variances, and then they were gonna-
Yeah, they did for the height, no, they didn't.
They did.
Hire a civil engineer to design the site.
Well, I know the right way.
So, there is no hardship.
It-
Case in point.
Oh, oh, possibly, right, but that's another thing, so they went, and then they, and it's kind of stalled, because I think they're restarting sort of, but you could have held that on this, you are, you know that you're allowed to hold those on the same night, if, if you guys so choose. You could have you here, the ZVA case, and then when it goes to you, you could, that's just an example.
Ken, hardship doesn't necessarily have to be for money.
It can't be for money, can't be.
It can't, money is not hardship, that, that is-
Because everyone would just say that.
In that particular case, they dropped three feet, to miss the airport regulation for height, as of the town regulation. Balance your site, right? Cut three feet out, rebalance your site.
Right.
You're done.
Grade.
Okay.
Grade, I know it was-
There was a viable solution, a very easy one, didn't need a variance.
They're dropping way below the forty feet.
Right, but I'm saying, they got a variance.
They got, they were, they were given one, and I said, they shouldn't have been given one.
Burr, you know Burr thought that, Burr said, great, and Burr said, come on.
Yeah.
This, this came up at the last BOS meeting, that, that, you know, a gentleman came in here and discussed that, said, you know, you know that building will stop certain aircraft from flying in here, there will be no more. And, now, I don't know that to be the case or not, but it's a, you know, I mean, it means rovers doesn't fly anymore, that means Far Harbor doesn't fly anymore, and that's that.
They're allowed to fly in, there's potentially, the pilots being concerned that there would, there would be a safety issue. But the FAA doesn't state with the minimum housing structures, but they're, they are across, they're not allowed to fly in. Because this structure, no matter what gets approved, has to get FAA approval, and I spoke to a gentleman about this.
We shouldn't be discussing this.
Well, maybe not, but just so you know, yeah, they, it's not like they can't, it could be a priority.
It's already gone through, so they were given the-
No, it hasn't even come to them.
It hasn't come to you.
The variance was granted, under the height.
Yeah.
We haven't seen it yet from, from the planning board.
We shouldn't be discussing that.
But that variance is gone, so it's not even a topic of conversation.
I think, I think the point that I started with the discussion was that, sometimes it may be beneficial in cases like this, to have joint meetings, so that it doesn't end up awkward at some point, because some of these projects are, you know, it's something we haven't seen in Newport in a very long time, big projects.
The construction is, it's going nuts, it's hard to keep up with. I get a new home every single week, had someone in today, had someone, and I get almost confused, I'm like, like, which process of mine, who? Because they're all, it's, it's crazy, it's excellent in a way for Newport, because it's big, the influx of money, in a way.
Yeah.
But tighten up the, the ZVA, the zoning rules, I would be my, at least look at them.
Okay.
Do we have any comments from the public?
I was gonna go back to, is there any more conversation on that?
Can we, can we, I just want to say, to that point of, Gunther Huber may have spoken to that, you know, from the Conservation Commission, we're going to try and make a concerted effort to have one of us present at the planning board meeting.
Love to have you.
Because of the very fact that, you know, there may be issues with wetlands, or there could be issues with, you know, what the master plan has done.
I mean, by all means, I mean, it's my knowledge, I was on the Conservation Commission years ago, and the Conservation Commission is a subpart of the planning board, and should be involved in this process.
And we really kind of believe that there just isn't enough dialogue, and at least in, in a fashion, we try- And we really kind of believe that there just isn't enough dialogue, and at least in, in a fashion, we thought, at least getting somebody here to your meetings.
Well, sometimes the thirty day bind is, you know, when people submit to get the conservation, the planning, you know.
They're always after, yeah, I can't deny them already because it's state law, that if they make the deadline, but we, we've talked to the C C, they're come after you. And so a lot of times when you, you always say, where's the C, Chris? And I know, and I'm like, go, I go, they're on it, but, and then I'll forward it, and that's why we try to get you to say, as long as there's no conditions from, and the C C is.
We want that input.
That you take their input seriously, and I usually like them, just put some conditions down. Uh, because I say you guys pretty much go with what they request.
Or some comments, just.
Absolutely, yes.
It was actually one of my frustrations when I was on the Conservation Commission, because
You.
Other than taking care of some trees on the common, you didn't do anything because you weren't part of the process.
They, they're very much more.
And a lot of the commissions or four ports in town just do work in silos, and, and I think working with zoning and, you know, for you guys is, and us working with you is in zoning, especially in this year.
You should be suggesting zoning.
Doing the, the master plans.
And our, yeah. There should be a lot of things that they could recommend via zoning that pertains to the, the natural resources, like I stated. My opinion doesn't matter, do I see what's happening to Newport? If everyone likes it, don't change anything. Do I think some of your beautiful rural areas could stay a little plumper? But again, that would be like you, that you, whoever, and the town that devolved.
Yeah.
Well, I think in particular with, um, you said with, with amount of variances that go out, if, if, if the zoning rules were really held to, there may not be as much of a need to maybe joint meet, but if we're just giving these out, you know, like candy, then it really starts to impact when it gets to the planning board, it's like, whoa, that variance was handed out, now where, where do we stand?
Right, you got, you got no knife for the knife fight sometimes.
Right, so, so, I mean, like I said, those things that were really so rare, and so I don't really know the history of that, that being less, less so right now. But anyways, I think it's, it's a good point.
At the very least, we, you know, if we're talking to each other, we kinda get an idea of the thinking going on on each of the.
The other part of it though is that if we make it too hard to do anything, we're not moving forward.
Right.
I think that's where we're, where, where some of this is at, is, you know, we're trying to make it possible to do things.
Right.
You know, cause I, a lot of the jobs I'm working on in the town of Newport right now are jobs we're talking about, and they would, they wouldn't happen if them variances, or, or if we didn't.
We don't wanna lock Newport into nineteen sixty. We wanna be able to come into the modern world.
You couldn't sell a lot of land in this town for about fifteen years. Cause I tried, I also had some pretty nice lots, and I tried, and I tried to drop the price and drop, and I couldn't move anything for any.
If you own land in this town, I would not sell it, I would, I would, everyone wants, since COVID, this is one of the highest coveted towns. I've, I've, there's nothing going on like this inside of being New London, and very, very, I know a lot of the people, you know, the big subdivision near the, um, golf course, I don't know if you remember, huge, um, multimillion dollar broker from Wall Street. That huge, that huge thirty-five acres, and then he made those, he made actually nice lots on break, that, he made really nice lots. He's, but big money came in from Manhattan, New York, from, New York, Connecticut, and, uh, Massachusetts, those are the happy hitters.
No, I get that, I just, you know, I guess I'm speaking from a position of conservatism too, because you can't, I mean, everybody, historic commission's here, and you're trying to protect your nice little town, as much as you want growth.
Absolutely.
You're trying to protect what your town is, and if you're giving it away on, here's a variance, here's a variance, and the rules don't matter, then, well, you're not gonna have what you think you got.
I mean, if we're gonna keep having kids, and our kids are gonna be able to afford to buy homes.
Right, it's a fine line.
It is a fine line, it's a very fine line, because I see like even
No, right.
The stuff that most of us would consider affordable houses, you know, home park, the price of the price of those now. You would be shocked if I told you what stuff is sold for in the last month.
He's got some, yeah, I walked through a few of these, and they're going for tons of money, and they're.
Tell us you're making all kind of money.
He's making, he's making that, he's making that.
Yeah, and they're just the law, yeah.
But you've done a few of them, haven't you? You've done beautiful renovations.
No, it's not affordable to a young person.
No.
If a young person graduated high school and went to work at Ruger's, they couldn't afford it now, so.
Well, even renting apartments and stuff like that is so expensive.
That's why they're living in a camper in the back.
I will say, I'm getting multiple upon multiple phone calls about the workforce housing. The early, the most recent one was Ruger begging for, how many of those units can we have? I obviously forward them to the, to the district, and then the ones going, but besides that, nurses, teachers, Ellen is.
It's gotta get started, I'm like.
Right, but, and then the look, the school is trying to grab a section. I mean, they're gonna be, they're good, working, full-time.
Lebanon are negative units.
I know, right?
Right.
And they.
I think we still are, at least we're doing.
It's, it's sort of.
They've, they've been negative for quite a while.
I think it was down in Milford, it was so bad that one of the bigger businesses there actually built their own apartments.
And Roger, not surprised.
I, I can tell you, if I have a rental that comes up, it's usually gone within an hour or two to whoever I want to rent it to. I can always get quality, they're quality places.
Right.
But like, that's how bad it is. I'll get forty or fifty phone calls within hours of, that's how desperation, how much desperation there is, and it's really, people living, people don't wanna be living with each other, and.
That's what it is.
But being the other side of the workforce housing that, that I, I can appreciate and also have concern for at the same time, is that I've seen the condition of some of the rental units in this town, and shame on some people. And then that, that, that may drive people to look at what they're doing, and what they consider to be livable conditions, because all of a sudden, you're gonna say, there's something better over here, and these people are gonna be forced to say, maybe, maybe I'd consider what I consider living space.
Or they might sell, because I'll get, I'll guess what, I know many developers that say, I have offered three times for what, what there's even a mark for some of these multi-units, and most of the, and these are not pretty multi-units. Most of the people are sitting on it, but the minute they become empty, hopefully they'll either beat them, or they'll sell them for a fortune, and someone else will beef them up. Because people are begging to invest, um, in, in here too, to buy those units. So it's, Newport is definitely not, is, I do think, the big worry is, uh, the lower income people, I believe, are gonna be pushed out. Because I couldn't afford to buy here, and I get called all the time that you are pushing out all, right, they say me, I go, I agree. It, no one can afford the rent, and even the people that used to say rent is section eight, they don't have to anymore. They let, they, they could just, even though it might not be a nice place.
It's staggering, the rents.
It's crazy, and it's frigging big.
The new construction too, for the most part, is very expensive.
It's nice. It's, the, the workforce housing ones are all, everyone has air conditioning, elevators, all, all your heats included, all your water, all your sewer, all your garbage collection for forty percent below the county's average market rate.
Good deal.
You are saving a thousand a month, potentially. That's good money.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Larry. Anything else?
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, uh, you know, since the big projects also seem to have, you know, big federal money behind them too. And are there any programs, and what's, what's the, and there are so many houses that are sort of being demolished because of neglect, you know, on, is there any, any programs where we can get ahold of these houses, you know, or, or, you know, stick, help people rehab old houses and determine two-unit pay appeals, you know? I mean, two or three of them are gonna walk in Main Street.
Owners come to mind, yeah.
They're, those properties, Larry, I know exactly who owns them. That person has been approached by many people begging to buy them, you're talking empty, and I know who owns them. There are many young, young developers that have purchased young, there's like three of them on Laurel, I'd say.
But are there grants available or anything?
They're doing it, they're not even looking for money, they're, they're, but there are some people that own a lot of property that, like Jeff just said, they're not gonna sell, and they're leaving in yucky condition, I know, I know it, and we can't force a private property owner to, to sell.
Comes down to the owner and their willingness to.
I understand, I never quite, I can figure out, um, how the business model of paying taxes on a place is empty.
It's, it's empty, if it wasn't empty, we'd be able to condemn it because it's not livable, but because it's empty, because I've gone and inspected these with the safety officer, there's nothing we can do because no one's living in it. If someone went to, we would have to post it, but these are empty, and, and again, I'm well aware that people have been offered. I think they know they're sitting on a gold mine, so they're sitting on it.
So your, your question about, about, you know, where's the money available for the small investor?
Exactly.
You know, it's really tough, because these big, these guys, oh, forty units, we got all this money, and you have some guy who says, wow. I mean, let's, let's just take for instance, uh, the Gables or the old Moose Lodge that's down there, which I've looked at.
Would be great for, for selling.
Yes, that's something.
Four, six units, five units.
Amazing, but there's no parking, there's all, all kinds of issues there, but, um, where's the money for those people? Where, where, where do they look, where do they start looking? Do we, if those resources are available, do we try to post them so people can say, oh, there's, there's a way to take these historic properties? Because they, they have such value to our town in so many ways.
If, if, if you can get backing for a twenty or thirty unit, whatever, because the feds wanna give you four billion, five million, or whatever, where it, where are the dollars that are available for small projects that probably add more value in some?
Absolutely.
Some way, yeah, I agree.
I would think that would be our state representatives. I do know that this state amongst many others are pushing housing, housing, and, and that the state in total has one of the lowest empty units in the country, where supposedly twenty-five thousand dwelling, however you say a dwelling, a large house or one bedroom apartment, twenty-five thousand below what we need. Even the seventy and the forty-two unit, we don't even, Newport doesn't even skim the surface of cutting into that need in the, so Sununu and the state are giving away tons of money. I wonder if they could lecture to us, are there funds that don't go to the super mega owners? I would assume they're all.
Cause I know they just passed in their budget there, I think Monday, to put like twenty, twenty-five million towards housing, and then there's a couple other multimillion.
There's also a hundred million last year that I know about for different initiatives.
If you, if there was something like, you wanna take a house that has maybe some kind of historic value in town, and it, you can do this work to it, but it has to maintain historic integrity at the same time. Because the problem is when they get split up, and they don't maintain that integrity, and all of a sudden, there's a fire escape going down the front of the building. You know, so there are issues that come into play with that, because I, I in particular look at Newport, and I see a really pretty core. I see that basically starting toward Irving and ending at, um, I forget, you know, the, the end of the column. That, that's pretty nice all the way through there, but if you look at any of the arteries kinda coming in, and really look, instead of just driving in kind of, you know, because we drive by it every day, really look, it's pretty sad.
And they're nice built, they're nice homes, they're, they're nice homes, they just need paint and a new roof and some.
And incentive, these people just, I, I know what it's like to, to try to do those projects, like, it will just bury financially, especially in an, an old home where you just dig in and you're like, whoa, I just didn't realize that's an oven tube behind that that had a piece of wood mix coming out of that.
That's the era that they were built, right?
Right. But and I always, when I was on the, at the first night around of the planning board, I always, that was always sort of on my heart, like, where is that? Where's that incentive to get these arteries coming in with these beautiful houses? Because that's, people really see that, you know, at least I, I see it, and I always feel, like, I feel very settled and comfortable driving into, say, New London. So all of this put together now would not New London, I don't say.
I don't think we should be.
Or should we be?
You're pretty, you're prettier than, this downtown is one of the most impressive, New London's fine, but it doesn't have, we don't, New London doesn't have the historic structure, structures, and, and you guys, I mean, just the clock tower is, I, I love listening to it.
It's just, I think Newport is just large enough to be really special, and it's small enough not to be overwhelming. So, so it's like it could be there, and I think it could be there relatively easily, um, but you know, these are individuals.
Well, they're individual owners.
I think you're gonna get that rising, it's getting so expensive, I think they're either gonna say, I'm gonna cash out at the eight hundred fifty thousand for my three bedroom, or they're gonna say, crap, I can get twenty-five hundred for these three per unit, and they'll say, so. If they already are, I don't know if they might be. I don't. I think they'll, I think it's gonna bump up. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, no, I mean, yes.
Um, and I'd like to ask Jeff this, because he, he would probably, um, know it more than, anyways, um, the seventy-nine E, um, how does that, would that help a, um, smaller business owner or homeowner? Because when it first came out, that was how it was being advertised, that this will help the small, the small man, uh, improve his house, make the repairs, you know.
There's, there's the corridor for the seventy-nine E, I have the maps. It's, there's the maps, and it's the corridor which you're talking about coming in from Ruger.
That the historic.
And, and then it goes down to the Main Street. So this is a state initiative, seventy-nine E, you can look it up, it's one of the RSAs, we adopted it. Whether you are putting money on the inside or exterior, I believe there's five years of substantial tax rebates that this town will give based on the money you put in. So say you upgrade, let's just even say you paid the outside of what I knew, and it costs fifty. In theory, and I could, I could give you all the numbers, you're probably gonna get back twenty-five of that over five years of tax rebates.
If I remember right, what it does is it freezes your tax rate at that level, even though you're making improvements, so that, so you're not gonna get taxed at, you know, because you made improvements on your.
I know, but it's, I think it's, there's, let me, I can break it in, but she's, that was meant to like kind of make everything a little prettier. Ruger just got, they went for the seventy-nine E, and that's why they are not getting, uh, they're not having to pay for improvements for three years. They're gonna be taxed at, they're gonna be taxed at, I think, two point five million opposed to the seventy-five million. If that thing will, if not more, that'll be worth after it has the seventy years, maybe a hundred million it'll be worth. We taxed it, say a hundred million for the next three years, it'll be taxed at the two point five, so I might be a little off on the numbers. That's the same thing, they got a seventy-nine E approval.
The best you could do with it would be to post it, publish it.
It is posted, and, but we could, we could rebrand it, because it's still, it was, it was a big initiative, I don't think anyone knows.
You know, put on like the town website, FYI, private, you know, private owners, whatever. You know, consider taking advantage of seventy-nine E to.
Just that little zone.
You're gonna take a.
The corridors?
Yeah.
I could bring them out, it's, it's the Main Street, kind of from, a little before Yoshe's down to like the duck. And then it's the corridor up to the Ruger Max. No, no, have you, the maps are on the town, once you have, absolutely get them, I'll bring them in just so you could review, I'm, I'm there, but they're, it's a T. I'll read that, with the tiny houses.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Name your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
They're second.
I'll second it, since that's what we've been doing all night.
All who have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? A great conversation.